The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
What's your tomorrow?
We have six board members present tonight, one board member excused. Also to my left, Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, our superintendent, and at the end of the table, Andy Sarno, who's our chief financial officer. At this point, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Langenfeld for introductory remarks.
Very good, thank you, Dr. Warren. Good evening. Tonight, we are going to be discussing the 2016-17 budget. And just to give you some brief overview of where we are, the budget that you will hear about tonight is a balanced budget that reflects our district priorities. The four priorities around academic excellence, personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce. The budget reductions, and I'll talk a little bit briefly about that, none of them will directly impact our students. And the budget that you will hear about this evening reflects a placeholder for salary increases for staff to remain competitive. And as I stated, it is a balanced budget, which meant however, that as there were proposals for increases in various areas for different things for this next school year, we had to reduce by eight million. The budget actually reflects additional teachers and supports and resources needed to address the addition of 428 new English language learner students who joined the district. And also, it addresses and acknowledges the fact that we have many buildings in our district ranging from 60 to 100 years old. And so, our commitment to make sure that we maintain them well is included in this budget. There's a reflection of increased transportation costs that continue to rise, so there you will see an increase in there as well, making sure that we have enough dollars to address our students through McKinney-Vento, and also to make sure that we have funding to address the growing needs around students being transferred not only to our schools, but also to the private schools when the district is not in session. In addition to that, there are some increases to address competition for hard-to-fill positions. And also, there is a million-dollar increase in cost to support special education students who have opened and enrolled out. So those are just some basic overviews of where we are. And I know that Mr. Sarno has prepared a PowerPoint for you this evening, and we'll be covering that next. So I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, thank you so much, Dr. Langenfeld. And as you can see, and this is a presentation that we've had, and it really is for the community just as much as for the board, as we will formally be acting and adopting a budget and a levy here shortly. But this presentation's, I want to say that, and I think I even used this term prior to the meeting, it's a culmination of the budget process, but it really isn't. It's a culmination of the approval of the process, because the budget is a living document. It continues to evolve as we continue to deliver services to students. So this is a culmination of the approval process. So we have a public hearing. It was formally noticed with per-state statute for the evening, and that, in a sense, brings us to why we're here, is that we educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world. And I think Dr. Langenfeld's comments accurately reflect that, because that was kept in mind this year as we were going through the budgeting process, in minimizing that impact as we developed the budget, as we worked through that, through the limits, some of the obstacles that were in place. And I think that's important, because this is really why we're here. Formally, why we're here is that, oops, is a state statute. Why we're here is that we're required to have this public hearing this evening. State's statute 65.90 is that we will have this meeting, we will discuss revenues, expenditures, and fund balances. Oh, I'm a little bit late. And it's important to talk a little bit about our debt as it relates to the activities of the district. Last rating that we had was a AA1 through Moody's. That's very important, because I think in the very near future, and even though we will be acting on some debt this evening, it's not long-term debt, but the health of the district, the decisions that we're making are reflected in these ratings that are essentially additional costs to the district through interest that we might incur at some point. Debt capacity, this is one of the important things that, as we talk about how much debt the district is able to incur, as opposed to how much we actually do have incurred. Currently, we have $33, almost $34 million of debt, and it represents 4% of our borrowing authority. Essentially, we have a capacity of 10%, so we're well below that. In previous meetings, we did discuss comparables, other districts, both in the area, as well as large districts in the state, the city, the county, as well as the tech college in our region, and by far, we're fairly low. That is one of the rating components, up to 20% of that, which is our debt capacity, and how much debt we currently have. One of the disclosures that we're required to have under the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is GASB 54, talks about disclosing our fund balances. We currently have fund balance in our general fund, where we utilize $7.7 million of that that is audited, is towards our facilities, our health insurance fund balance use, and then lower-than-anticipated state and federal revenues. So again, as revenues and expenditures are coming in and going out, that was measured at $7.7 million of fund balance use. Special projects funds, which includes our gift fund, our special education fund, and again, all this information is in our budget packet that can be found online. I think that's important, that we've been posting these as we've been going along. Very little of our special projects funds are allowed to carry over fund balance, so very minimal, $1,254, slight decrease due to some activities. And by the way, if you do have any questions at any point, please feel free to ask. Our debt service fund, our 30s funds decreased by $1.4 million. It was us repaying a scheduled debt, so that was anticipated. Our Capitals projects funds, which is where we run all of our facilities remodeling and those associated projects, decreased significantly, and it did by $12.7 million as we're wrapping up our 2014 referendum. Further, our Fund 50, which is our food services fund, increased slightly. We did not purchase some items, some large items, things more than $5,000 per item that we anticipated. That was reflected in this year's budget. So we did purchase some things over the course of the summer that rolled into this year's budget, but $43,000 addition to our food service. Community Service Fund, which is, it's one of those funds, anything for students or adults, the community, outside of the typical school day. We began with a fund balance of a little over $800,000, and we did not spend all of our money last year due to lower participation at our CLC projects than we thought, and that resulted in about a $200,000 increase. And we will be spending the large majority of that increase in the current-year budget. Speaking a little bit further about our Community Service Fund, I do like to disclose, and we're expected to do this, what types of programs do we have in there, and what do those cost? So another one of the questions that was brought up at our first meeting on October 17th was, what's in there? How much does it cost? We've provided a question and answer that should be up on our website. And just for full disclosure at this meeting, we have after-school academic programming, and we did report out how many students are participating in that. And I apologize, I probably do have that information, but it is available on our website. We do have our middle school sports. They're available to age-appropriate students in their respective school. That's something that we do publicize. Our school and community resource officers, we have nine of those. We did add one for the current year. That's a contract through the city. And then our Board of Education Communications, those tapings are run through our Fund 80. Nothing's been changed. The levy for Fund 80 has remained the same for the last three years. No significant changes short of that one additional school and community resource officer as compared to last year. I'd like to report, students drive our revenue, and we really have four quadrants of our revenue limit that we're able to calculate. And the large piece of that is that, dating back, we're allowed so much money per student, we have our count in September, and that's what we're reporting here, is the September membership, those students that we're able to count. So these are students that do not, that go to our schools, attend, excuse me, attend within our boundaries, not counting pro-kill students. Private school students are not in this number, but it's anybody that is a public school student living within our boundaries. So we have had another slight increase as compared to the last several years, and that continues as we have-
So this is open enrollment out?
This includes open enrollment out. It does not include open enrollment in.
Yeah.
And that would be a good use then of enrollment. So who's enrolled in our schools? Open enrolled in, and then those students, our students attending our schools.
Andrew, I'm sure everybody at the table understands it, but would you please clarify for those who might be listening, why we are counting those who are open enrolled out?
Yeah, per-state statute, we're allowed to count those students who are open enrolling out. They fall under our membership and our count. And then the state statute says that we will then pay the respective enrollment district a certain dollar amount.
And that's really the key right there, for those that might think that we're fudging the numbers because the kids aren't in our schools. We are paying their tuition.
Yes.
Or we're paying the cost of their enrollment at the other schools.
Yep.
And they're, us counting them, we have to count them, because that's revenue in, and then it, well, then it goes out.
Goes right at the door.
But that helps us count, I mean, that's part of our revenue, is those students, and then we have to forward that money to the school district where they enroll.
Correct. And if at any point in time, those students wanted to return, we would have to have a spot for them.
Without benefit of the money coming back?
Correct, yeah. Yep. Because they did, if a student attended another school, another district, through the count date, then came back, that district would have received the payments for them, yeah.
But it's the same thing-
We would not have been able to count them, I guess.
It's the same thing with voucher students. If they come back, the money doesn't come back with them.
Correct. Yep, we would not, they would not have been in our count.
Yeah.
Yep.
So is that our official third Friday count?
This is our official, no.
No.
We've got that, that's in today's numbers.
Okay.
I do have, yep.
Okay.
So this is preliminary, as of about December, excuse me, I said December, October 12th. So the count has changed. To officially count, you have to show up a day, the day, the count day, or a day before and a day after the count. So since the count date, there's been, I think, a couple of dozen students now that have shown back up again after they attended a couple of days before the count. So this is something that almost changes daily. It's difficult. And we've captured as much of it as possible.
Is there a time limit to the day, I mean, if you show up the day after?
No.
You can show up in February, and we retroactively add it to our count?
Good question. The only deadline that we have is that now that we'll formally adopt the levy-
And that's-
Essentially, today is the deadline.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
There's no benefit to count them after that?
No.
Right?
No. It is interesting, as I indicated, we receive a dollar amount per student. This is something that's been going on since 1993. I do go back to '96. And that little trend had been kind of following, not quite the CPI, but something close to that. In districts for this entire time, expenses were going up more than the revenue coming in. You can see when Act 10 took place. Since then, we've received a $50, a $75, a $75 increase, and this is the revenue limit increasing. That's very important to say. The last two years, the revenue limit did not increase. That was a part of the 15-17 state by neo-budget. That's been at zero. So a revenue limit is not increased. We have received a stipend that comes to us through a categorical label, last year and this year. It was still less than, the increases were still less than historical increases in the revenue limit, but we have seen some new dollars that's reflected in the budget. But it is interesting to, it's important to keep that in mind, that the revenue limit has not increased.
Stipends are, you know, people may look at it and say, well, it's still money. It is. It's like giving an employee a stipend rather than a pay raise. It doesn't raise his or her base salary. So it's extra money, but a stipend is certainly not as good as an increase in revenue, because it doesn't do anything to your base.
Correct. And that's the difficulty. As we approach the 17-18 school year-
Yeah.
-that's going to be one of the important considerations, because without some type of guarantee, which we won't know until late spring or summer, that's going to be difficult, and we'll have to work through that, through some options, through some scenarios. I like to look at the revenue limit. We have a three-year average on our membership, and you multiply that by that revenue limit per student, which hasn't changed. We're sitting at 21,934 students for our membership, $9,432.69, so our revenue limit is $209 million. I'll call that the first formula that we need to keep in mind. Talks about how much money we're allowed. Where we actually get the money from is two pots of money. You take that revenue limit, and generally speaking, there's general state aid and property taxes. So if our revenue limit was $1,066 on average, approximately comes from the state, $34 comes from taxes.
$340.
$340. Thank you, Dr. Warren. I like to think about it a little bit different. We're going to revisit that, because if the revenue limit's already been calculated, and the state aid is provided from the state, what's really left? So let's redo this. It's really the revenue limit minus general state aid equals property taxes. So it's that same $1,000 minus the $660. Let's talk about property taxes. So that's how it's really calculated, is because we need to understand what's left as taxes determining how much we need to generate from our property owners. Little bit of information from our general state aid history, and it has increased over the last couple of years. What's interesting about that is the general state aid, I call it the one-legged stool. It's really dependent on property values, how property-rich or property-poor you are. The more property-rich you are, the more the state says you can generate your own revenues, we're going to give you less. Property-porer districts receive more general state aid. So that's not to say that though our state aid has increased, that we're becoming more property-poor, but it's the value per student. Our enrollment has gone up, our property values have also gone up, but what it says to me is that, number one, either there's new state aid, which there has been a little bit, or our students have grown faster than our property values, therefore making us a little bit more property-poor. Not necessarily a bad thing, but it's the one-legged stool that we have to stand on it, or sit on at this point in time. So as I indicated, property-rich districts, less state aid, property-porer districts, more state aid. That state average is about 66%, and that's right where we're at. That's why I use that analogy. We're right at the state average. Our property values, and again, this is that property-rich, property-poor, our property values have grown in the last several years. This is not uncommon prior to the recession-
Recession.
Thank you, that we'd seen in 2007, '08, '09. But property values have recovered, and in our area economically has grown. We've done a nice job. It's one of the difficulties, is that we don't know if it's increases in those values or actual growth. We just know that our property values in general have grown, a little over $8 billion Last thing, and this is important, is that if you want to actually calculate our tax rate, or what they call the mil rate, the mil, which is a per-thousand-dollar rate, you take that property taxes or our levy, and divide it by our total assessed values, that $8 billion, and we're levying about $80 million, divided by our $8 billion is approximately $10. And so we're at $10.16. That's why it's important, because we need to calculate our tax rate. That's something that we do share with the media, with the public. Very open about that. The one interesting part, as I indicated, property growth versus reassessments, we don't know. This is a taxation rate that's divided among all tax owners, property owners or taxpayers. Changes in property values, increases, decreases, we don't know that. It was estimated that our property values are going to increase by 1.4%, which they did. The levy increasing by 1.4 was an estimate, which it did. As we look to 16-17, the taxation rate is going to be held flat, and that's what we'll be discussing here shortly. It's going to be the same taxation rate that was presented and approved for 2015-16. So as I share a little bit of our history, we've been hovering right around that $10 taxation rate, that mil rate history, and that's something that, as I discussed, living within our means, something like this is, I think it's beneficial to the district, it's beneficial to the taxpayer. I hope that we're taking care of them while maintaining the programs that the district can offer. We do, at this point, that this slide was created, we did have some estimates and assumptions. Shortly, we will talk about the changes. That was a document that was provided for this evening, and it was posted in Neptune under the district's website. So there are some changes that we'll be talking about. So the membership has been updated for tonight. State aid, the final amount, has been updated. That's reflected in the budget. Vouchers at this point in time are finalized. Vouchers were maintained very flat to what they were last year. Last year was the first year, this is the second year, but very minimal increase in that. Salaries and benefits, staffing, that's unchanged from the previous meetings. But as I mentioned, tonight is the culmination of the budget approval and the levy adoption, but the budget's a working document, and as we continue to work through the budget, changes do happen, and budget amendments will be brought forward, as they always have been, for your formal adoption and approval. As was presented in the past, a balanced budget is brought forward to you, essentially the general fund, our Fund 10. Everything that we have identified, both revenues, expenditures are included. Staffing, both the number of staff, as well as possible raises, are included in the budget. We have, as I indicated, a final membership number. We have a final state aid number, a final voucher number, and we will be discussing all of those momentarily. The levy, the dollar amount is estimated, and it did increase by approximately 1.4%. The mil rate has maintained at flat at $10.16 as it was last year. No increase in the revenue limit, as we spoke about a few moments ago. That's very important, because it essentially compromises the district's financial stability. And I can't say that enough, it really does. We continue to have increases in expenditures. We have a diverse population of students. It's important to remember that. No increase in the revenue limit. It's difficult to maintain our programs. It's difficult to operate.
Well, I think, if I could add to that-
Please.
-I think that as the needs of our students change and grow, that's part of our challenge and opportunity. I think I opened to sharing how many additional new students we had who came from other countries, who joined us, and we embrace them, but we also need to provide them with the resources and supports that they deserve and need to be successful. So that's our challenge. 428 new students whose first language is not English joined us. So we need more resources, so this doesn't help.
Mike?
Couple of points, and I want to bring up one thing that I think Michelle brought up at our last meeting, and I know we've talked about it before, but I think every time we talk about the budget, we should bring up this figure. When the revenue limits were established in 1993, Green Bay was a very frugal school district, and we're paying the price for that frugality ever since. And if you were a higher-spending district, then you're still advantaged today. The revenue limit for the Green Bay Public Schools is about $900 less than the state average. If Green Bay was only brought up to the state average for revenue limits, we would have almost another $19 million to spend on our students. So that's something that I think needs to be pointed out every time we talk budget. And then, private school vouchers. I believe this past year, the statewide voucher program was limited to 1% for each school district's enrollment, and I believe in 16-17, it's going up to 2%?
It's still at 1%.
1%, one more year, okay.
Correct.
So starting in the 16-17 school year, that then will increase to 2%. It will increase one percentage point each year until it reaches 10%. And then after that, unless the state law changes, there is no limit. So that is something going forward that is an additional thing, excuse me, that is an additional thing that makes our budgeting more and more difficult as we go year to
We do have meetings set up for the 2017-18 budget, the first of which is this Friday. And that's the amount of time that we need to prepare. Yep, yep. So we'll be moving forward. Mike Clark from Barrett has joined us tonight for the next meeting, but Barrett has put together a forecast model. That's something that we're going to be doing from now on, and it helps project out. It takes your history. It allows you to control some of the variables, to plan, create scenarios. That's something that we need. So we're going to be utilizing that. We will be having discussions with stakeholders and helping understand where we're headed. That's going to be very important in bringing, in maintaining that financial health to you, into the community.
Well, and if I could offer too, it isn't just Green Bay, you know, and I think you think about all of the Brown County school districts who are under the state average. I think it's all but one. So we are all in a similar position as we continue down this road, and looking to the state to help us at least get to the state average.
Are there any questions that you guys have?
I think this is a crack at it.
Any questions from the community at all?
Just asked Jennifer to bring us some audience.
And again, all of this information is on the business section, the business services section of the website. So let's talk just briefly about the changes that have taken place from where we had estimates, and now we have final numbers. One-page document in front of you that you should have, and again, I believe it was communicated to you late last week, equalized state aid, slight adjustment, $231,000 increase based off of our projections. That was done purposefully. I wanted to be a little bit cautious. And then likewise, slight change in our computer aid, as that's driven off of that above number. Open enrollment in students, because this is a revenue, very slight, almost a $30,000 increase based off of the information that we had in early October, reflective of the students that we're able to capture. Property tax levy, a change of about $1 million less, and that was an accounting error that we caught late last week. I wanted to make sure revenues were overstated. Does not- Does not impact the mil rate. And this has been, because it's a revenue, it has been offset by adjustments that we've made. Other unchanged, and this was interesting because earlier in the week, as we were putting this document together, I think there's worries, well, if you add all of the top, top numbers, it doesn't total what was in the budget book. So we've added this. And this is a new, new line item, both on the revenues and expenditures. Unchanged revenues and unchanged expenditures. These are a lot of line items that have not been changed. But about $30 million, which is the same, which is in both columns, both from October 17th until tonight. So total changes, $864,000 less in revenues. That has been offset by expenditure changes of the same, which is why we still have a balanced budget this night, tonight. Voucher payment, earlier I estimated $1.4 million of vouchers, which would have been a slight increase compared to last year, just in case there was new students. That was not the case. Last year, we were at about $1.1 million. So this $1.16 million is reflected. That's actual numbers that we received from the state. Inter-fund operational transfers, slight- Yep, please.
How many students does that represent, do you know?
Sure, so last year, we estimated about, at the one point-
I mean, is it mixed with the special ed students too?
There are some special ed students, I'm sure. But we're not given the number of students. Last year, it was estimated about 150. Again, because there's two different rates. Elementary and secondary have two different rates.
So we don't know.
We don't know. I'm guessing that it's about 153 students. I bet you there's about three or four new students as compared to last year. But it might be totally different students. There might have been 30 voucher students last year that now are in our schools. And some of our students in our schools that were here last year might be voucher students now. We don't know.
Yeah, I think that, I think we can get the number now of FTE, which could mean 4K, which wouldn't be a full FTE either. But I'm not sure that equates to, I'm not sure we can, we can go back and try to find that because I understand we can't. But it would be FTE as opposed to numbers.
Numbers, okay.
Yeah.
So that's, that's below, that's below one, the 1% cap. And even though the cap went up beyond 1%, we're still stayed well below the 1%.
So last year and this year, 1% cap, which would be approximately 220 students. So we're 100, 150, 155 students, so we are below it.
So it's not, right, and you'd be more concerned if you were using the full 1% because it would maybe mean some people are knocking on the door. But in fact, that's probably not the case because less than the total number have been used last year, this year, and from the, from the start.
I think we should go back and make sure that that's accurate. So I, I don't know that we can say that. So I'd like to get-
Sure.
See what we can get from the state. If that's important, we can certainly try to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Have a great trip.
We can, we'll look into that. Because I, I understand there could be some numbers of FTE which could be different.
Yep.
You could have certain FTEs because does a, a four, or a four or five-year-old, what do they count as?
A .6, .5, or .6.
Right, so you could have, so I think we should look into that and see what the numbers are.
Inter-fund operation transfers, so these are where we reconcile our Fund 27 and our 30s funds, so that decreased by $480,000. Purchase service adjustments, an increase of $612,000 reflective of those budget changes. Construction services, we decreased related to our projects that we have by $706,000. Open enrollment out students, so we had a couple of new students based on where we were at earlier in the month. So that's been reconciled now. We have unchanged expenditures of 194, almost $195 million. And again, revenues equal expenditures, which is why we have a balanced budget in front of us this evening. Bottom information, and this is one of the important pieces, we set the levy and whatnot. General fund changes from initial to now, $253,000 decrease. Our debt service fund increased by approximately $250,000. And what that's related to then, since we had that decrease in the general fund, will be defusing some debt. So this past spring, and as we've done in the spring, we're essentially prepaying some debt early. So I've increased our debt service fund very slightly to offset that decrease in the general fund. Community service fund, that's been unchanged for the last several years. And it was unchanged from October 17th until now. Total levy, $84,070,906. $3,466 increase, decrease. And that taxation rate, again, when you take the levy divided by our property values, $10.16, that's been unchanged since October 17th, when this was initially presented. Any questions? I do thank you for your time. Thank you for the support and your understanding.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next is a time for public comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak before the board this evening? Do you have any motions?
I do, we have to move to adjourn this one.
Yeah.
I would move to adjourn.
Thanks. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Now we will reopen the special board meeting. And I will, do you have opening remarks for this part? No, okay.
That would be redundant.
Yes. I don't know if you had something else.
It's on the agenda. It's always on the agenda, and I always say, huh.
Huh.
That being said, I move that the 2016, '17 approved budget as modified be adopted.
Second.
Any last questions? Sandy?
Maloney?
Aye.
Warren?
Aye.
Dorff?
Aye.
Jan?
Aye.
Becker?
Aye.
Blackett?
Aye.
Carried 6-0.
I move that the resolution awarding the sale of a $15 million general obligation promissory note as presented be approved.
Second.
Did you have?
Yeah. I said, I said.
Yeah, it's seconded.
Right.
Do you have Mike Clark here?
Right.
He has the final pricing.
I think it was very similar to what we projected.
If you recall back in September, the board approved a resolution debated to this. Additional levy, which is reflected in what you just approved. So it's already included, this is not anything beyond that.
I didn't give you a copy here, okay.
But we finalized this. It came in slightly lower than what you approved in, in September. This is the general obligation promissory notes and the amount of $15 million. The settlement date will be November 4th. I'm looking at the only page. This is a little different, and I'll explain. The maturity is June 20th. And then the interest that'll be due, one interest payment on the 20th. It's non-callable. And that's because of how you, well, it's a very short-term instrument. It's just till June. But you've already levied in your, what you approved in September, you're required to levy what you just approved. So, and if you don't spend the money for the annual exemption, they'll reduce your revenue limit the following year correspondingly. So you might as well hold the money when you do have it available and earn as much interest on it as you can to offset the costs. So that's why we made it non-callable because it's really mathematically to your benefit not to prepay it on mechanics. The rate is 1.16, that we, our estimate was 1.25 back in September. And Zion Bank is the purchaser.